The United States of America and to the recovery for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna move the public hearing up first and open the four up to a public hearing over ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five, which is the waterworks, utility, rate rate increase. And for a public hearing, anybody has anything they want to say, now's the time to say it, or questions? Okay, then we need to do the second reading.
Did you talk to me about adjournment? Okay, so instead of closing the public meeting, I think you need to adjourn it and then we'll reopen up the public hearing at the next meeting too, because we have some notices that need to be mailed out to the out-of-town rate payers.
Right.
Okay.
Do we need to read, do the reading again now?
You can do the second reading after the adjourned public hearing at the next meeting. But you need to announce now, so you don't have to publish it again in the newspaper, that you'll adjourn the public hearing and then you'll continue it on, what's the day of the next?
Third.
Okay, on November third at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Here, at the town hall.
Okay, we'll adjourn the public meeting and reopen it on November the third with the second reading. And that's our first meeting next month. So we're just adjourning it to then and we'll pick it up again November the third. Public comments. Department reports, A P C.
Okay, we met last week and we also met tonight because we needed to approve the bonds for everything that's been going on out there at the subdivision. And we approved all the bonds for what they've done and what they still need to do. And then the TAC committee met last Wednesday and approved the second flat and we signed off on that tonight as well.
Okay. Anybody got any questions from council? Art board?
Yeah, I do have something. We had our cleanup on Saturday and in the garage, you know, there's several items that are, who knows how long they've been there, how old they are, including pictures. They are two trash cans, a tire swing, and two park benches, and then some lost bikes, I'm assuming. And I didn't know, I think I need town approval or you guys vote on if we can get rid of them. I was gonna start a conversation with Smith Trash about disposing them. I wanted to get your thoughts on that, if that's something we can approve or you have other thoughts on what to do with them.
Doesn't have to be. Amy, it's a more above below so much of monetary value we have to deal, we need to approve.
Declare a surplus.
We need to declare everything surplus, even if you're just going to discard of it, discard it. I mean, even if it's worthless, we still have to declare it surplus.
But then we...
Is that a resolution?
Mm-hmm, yeah, just a surplus resolution.
So is there, is there anything in there that's worth anything that you're talking about?
I don't think so. I think the benches are broken, tire swing's definitely broken, and I'm not sure about the trash cans, I haven't been able to actually look in them because they're quite large and blocked by other things. And the bikes, I just assumed maybe I would post something to see if people wanted them or just donate them. They don't seem to be broken, I think they're just, they were just forgotten.
They're not something the police put down there, are they? Frank, do you know?
Can you do a resolution cutting in the next meeting?
Yes, yep. I'll get with you and maybe you could just email me a list of the items you want included on the resolution.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want that? Pictures, lists?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Fire department.
Fire department. Just a big, had four hundred and fifty runs so far as of today, sixty-one runs, I think, since the last meeting. We did some mutual aid training with Centertown, Shift, Advance, and the office of Jamestown and Polax, but those two departments didn't show up, we did some training a couple weekends ago, so, white fire training with them. Other than that, that's pretty much it for the department.
Where do you do that, where do you do your training?
Tower up in Lebanon, the training tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a county life tower, so we had everybody who was basically goes up there.
Okay. Police department.
Thanks.
Utility.
Okay. So we met with Arpa homes last week in regards to fees out at, in the construction out there for the subdivision, they had some concerns. The average cost at this point was much higher than they were used to, however, it's the head end of the project. So once the additional homes get added and then the rest of the services get added, the average price starts to drop down. And so essentially, they identified the costs seem to be out of line, but when you look at the long-term cost as far as when you get all the homes put together, the average cost per home is less than what it takes to install a house, excuse me, an addition on Jamestown. So we're right there with the thing. The second item is utility board compensation. We'd like to recommend to request the president, current fee is twelve hundred, we'd like to move that to three thousand, and the board members from a thousand to twenty-five hundred. Did anyone have any questions about Arpa Home and what's going on there in regards to utility costs on the construction side? Okay?
I don't know why I'm running down.
Any questions on increasing compensation for the board members or president?
You talked at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
Well, we still have to do our salary ordinance for twenty twenty-six, so we will try to work that in the salary ordinance for next year.
I think I make a motion to approve it, okay?
Okay, I guess we can. Is that, ultimately, is that something we decide on or the?
The compensation?
Yeah.
Well...
Or the, would the U S B do that themselves?
They would decide on it, but it would need to be approved by, in the salary ordinance by the town council. So really, both bodies need to approve it.
Okay.
So if you want to do it for this year, we would have to amend twenty twenty-five.
I think he's talking that.
No, starting, starting the first year, right?
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we can, we can wait on that until we do the salary.
Yes.
We just include it in the salary ordinance and then approve it.
Good.
Did he say the board members have to?
Mark, please.
But I don't have a question.
You all done, utility, Earl, going on?
Randy, so I spoke to the gravel pit in Grand Louis to grab some field dirt from them because of rain, obviously, this weekend. I'll put it off until tomorrow, hopefully between today and tomorrow's night. We're gonna dump a couple loads down there and we'll take our backhoe and spread it out the best we can. I know you said you're gonna bury it out, right? Is that right?
Yeah, my thought was just get, get it filled in this fall so it can freeze and thaw and get rained on and settle.
Right.
And then next spring, go in there and actually finish it out.
Okay, so you, our role then will be to dump it, create with the backhoe, which is gonna be sloppy, and then you'll go down and fine-tune it next spring.
Yeah, that'd be fine, too.
Okay, well, that's not what you want?
No, you guys can do it to backhoe, that's fine. I won't, I don't have to drive you into town.
Yeah.
So, so go for it, that's how I'm doing.
Okay, all right. So that's the thing, fire department. The utility board decided to pass a resolution at our last board meeting, and it's coinciding with your ordinance that says that you're no longer going to incur a lot of the costs that come up with new construction and what have you. So as we see all these things coming our way and we realize the cost for everything is skyrocketing, when you look at some of the material we have to get, it's unbelievable. I have a resolution for you guys and the board did in fact pass it, but we would like you to read it and into the record tonight. And I'll give the original signed copy, I guess, to Amy or to Alice, whoever thinks they need to have it, I mean, Ally, okay? So there's the original, and if you would read that in, here's a copy for you guys. And basically, what this just surrounds is the fees that we're charging for out of the ordinary type of work. Was it either one?
No, no, oh, it's fine, it's okay.
We don't have to vote on it, does it?
No, no, they've already voted on it, I think you just want it read into the record.
That's all.
The utility service board passed resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one, utility service board for the town of Thorntown, Indiana, a resolution authorizing administrative fee. Whereas the utility service board for Thorntown Utilities for the town of Thorntown, Indiana, board is the governing administrative body for the Thorntown Utilities and has certain powers and duties under Indiana law. Whereas pursuant to I C eight dash one, point five dash three dash eight, any municipality owning a utility shall furnish reasonably adequate services and facilities and pay the necessary expenses henceforth to the operation of the utility. And whereas the Thorntown Utilities has experienced increased costs as a result of new development within the town and the extension or upgrading of existing services to new users by the inspection, project management, and administrative costs associated with the service upgrades and extensions. And whereas the board has determined that they should adopt an administrative fee to defray the expenses of upgrading existing facilities and extending utility services by installing new lines and/or utility facilities for new development within its jurisdiction. And whereas the board has determined that a fifteen percent administrative fee shall be added to the actual cost of the extension or upgrade of existing services to new customers to defray the expense of inspection, project management, and administration of such activities. Now therefore, we resolve that the Thorntown Utility Service Board, Town of Thorntown, Indiana, pursuant to state law, the board hereby imposes a fifteen percent administrative fee for the upgrade or extension of existing service lines or facilities to the actual cost to defray the expense of inspection, project management, and administration of the extensions or upgrades to existing facilities owned by Thorntown Utilities. It is all this seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-five, and is signed by the utility service board.
Okay, anything else, Earl?
Yep, I'll remind everyone that, and we have put in public notice out, we'll be hydro flushing this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and that usually brings a little concern. It's gonna start some things in the water, it doesn't last in some moments, some people don't even notice it, but we do it during fall and spring break, all break right now, so two days. Last thing I have for you is, I would like you to consider reassessment of the fee, the stipend that you give to the utility employees, team members for the street department. You know, they're not really paid by the hour, they are paid a stipend every quarter. And the current stipend has been in place since twenty-two, and the one before that had been in place for about five years, and twenty-two, I think, was raised maybe twenty dollars. Anyway, I have listed here the different responsibilities, expectations that are included in the street department, and on the very end is the stipend they currently receive and what I'd like you to consider increasing to for twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Same with yours, Earl, as a utility service board, we try to work it into
Yeah, sure.
Next year's salary ordinance.
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Allen, I know you got something to say.
I don't, my pastor don't want to say anything. I probably am supposed to have something, but I don't remember.
As a municipal consultant, this is Jeff Ward, right? He was absent without leave. Okay, Dan, you got some?
Yeah, just giving you an update on the water plant. Design is going very well, we've got a few options. The biggest thing, the well drillers are ready to get going, they need to get that woods cleared, and so we could get going on that. It's one that, I text Jeff today and asked him about it, so I was hoping to see him tonight, but I'll follow up with him in the morning and find out where is that with that. We can get that done soon. It's not super critical, but they have a window, the well drillers have a window to do it, maybe at the end of this month, well, maybe the end of the next week, so we're getting started on it. So I'll follow up with Jeff, but everything else is going well. We still plan to bid this in January and for the Okra award that you guys got, you have to have everything final by February of twenty-seven, and we should be fine then.
Can you get that cleared down by the, by the end of the next week? Can you get that woods cleared far enough down to drill the well?
We need to, and we're gonna do it off of the, where the existing wells are, we're gonna clear it back that direction rather than come up from the hill down, we're gonna come up from where the wells are and do that way. It's a lot shorter.
I'd just like to make sure it's over, it's not next to the existing well.
No. No, in fact, it, it has to be at least a hundred feet from the existing wells.
I'd like to see it two or three hundred feet from the existing well.
Well, it'd be nice, but you don't have that much property. I can show you a drawing.
Last night I heard from Jeff that he was trying to find some estimates or quotes for that, but I don't know if he's found anything, I don't know.
I'll check with him if I can.
Mike, you could help go down and start cutting trees.
I could be, but it sounds like they want to get started and I'm gonna be gone the rest of this week.
How convenient.
And I could be gone the rest, next week too, if I need to.
Okay. Is that it, Dan?
That's it.
Uh, we're not gonna do approval of the minutes yet, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Claims, A P V. Do it to him.
Sounds good.
Payroll dockets.
Yep.
Okay, we did the public hearing. I've got down here the second reading, we put that off till next. The odd fellows building ARPA funds update.
Yes, it is wrapping up and we have officially received the invoices, all but one, for all of the vendor work across the street. So there's just a spreadsheet of what's gonna get cut from the town ARPA funds, and I was just gonna get approval on that so that I could send those out as they come in, but those are the funds that are currently being cut from the town ARPA.
Did we, can I, who sent you?
The text, yeah.
Checks me, okay.
Yeah.
And you're gonna add this as like, if they approve this, you'll add this as an addendum to the claims docket, because those aren't listed on the claims tonight, but you'll just...
What's the, what's the deal with what occurs in locks, electric isn't paid?
They're on this claims docket, or the claim docket tonight. So all of that fell within what was approved when the vendor selection was made, but these are just the checks that are gonna be going out officially.
All the, all of them?
Just the ones by town. The grant covers a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so the grant funded invoices will be paid for out of the grant.
Okay.
You still, even though they're, so you'll still write the check from the grant funds.
Oh, correct, yes.
So you need to have them approved, all of them.
All of them, okay.
Yeah, you'll still write the checks from the grant funds and then the other checks from the ARPA funds, that's all they need to approve.
Okay.
So we need to approve the whole thing?
Yeah.
Where it says total outstanding for the town is seventy thousand two seventeen, it says allocated from town funds was sixty-eight, six twenty-four, where's the?
One of these is gonna be, there's a portion that's gonna still get paid out by grant funds as well as the town, and so we don't have an exact number on that yet. They're reworking the invoices to get right to that hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the grant's gonna fund.
Okay.
They won't make a motion to allow they, the vendor fees here?
Except for, for ready?
Ready project, yeah.
We'll make a motion to allow Alex to pay the needed...
Claims.
Claims for the ready project.
Anybody in discussion? I hear a second. On favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm here for the line back there.
It passed.
Could you sign this form for me, so that we can add it as an item?
Just sign at the bottom somewhere. Yep.
You might need to sign it down for the project or something. Okay. Bye-bye. Thank you for the whole, can't we send it down?
Well, then, I see.
Thank you so much.
I have an appointment to the B Z A to make tonight, which will be gone, Gray. And who swears in then? You guys do that, you do that?
Well, we can swear everybody in once, see if they have their first meeting, we can do that there before they start.
There'll be no swearing tonight.
I don't think we have enough yet for a meeting, so we'll just wait and swear.
We have a meeting too.
Two, three to go.
Okay.
Do you guys have anybody else that you're thinking of, or is that what you're getting right out?
How are the five members appointed?
Hold on one second.
President.
Yeah, the other three are just town members.
President appoints one.
President appoints three. Do you want that? Yep, that's there. Okay. President appoints three, town council appoints one, the plan commission appoints one from their membership.
Well, you can't. You gotta be one or the other. You got it?
No, he appoints one from the A P C. We appoint one from the A P C and we appoint Nancy, and he has to appoint one from the A P C.
Yes, that's correct. So on the B Z A, there's two plan commission members that are on the B Z A, yeah.
So the president appoints three with one of those three being a B Z A member?
Yes, and then just two other citizen members.
Okay. And right now, I don't know, I don't have any names for anybody to consider for our empty seat on the town council. Have you guys got any names, anybody that you're thinking about?
Yeah, we have one. Name's John Regan, I think you know him, he would really like to be on the board, so I don't know if we want to set up a...
You're talking to town council?
Oh.
You're talking about the B Z A?
I'm sorry, I thought you spoke to you, but I suppose.
So we still need three people for the B Z A?
Yes. D J died.
Three, basically, three citizens is what we need, okay.
You were talking, B Z A, granted?
No, he was not.
Well, he actually will consider that as well, but he would like to be on the town board.
Okay, is John Regan?
Yes.
If he was on the town board, could he still be a member of B Z A?
Yeah.
No?
Where's he live?
Main Street. Main Street, just down the, just down the block there. Been in town by twenty-five years, so, twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
You get a hold of him, find out if, if he could get in rent for an interview.
If you just set it up, he'll be here.
We have to, how do we deal about doing that, Amy?
You have to have a special public meeting to interview your candidates, so you just need forty-eight hours advance notice, and then Ally will post a notice on the door, send it to the newspaper.
So we could do that, say at six o'clock, or the day of our next meeting, we could do it an hour early?
Sure.
Something like that?
Yep.
That'd be all right. Do it on...
First Monday of November?
He's third.
Okay. In the event, I'm working on two more people too, in the event, I end up with three.
If we best, we didn't do it on the same nights, we could. I mean, I think we should interview them all at the same time. I mean, why not? Send the reasons for me. It's not like we're asking good questions, but, I mean, as it stands right now, he's the only one that, yes, I would do it. You end up with two men. You wouldn't need one for the utilities.
And BZA.
We don't need it.
We, we have to fill that within thirty days. Is that it?
We're supposed to.
That's what the statute says, is thirty days. Yes. I mean, if you cannot, then if you don't have anybody and you cannot do it within thirty days, then it just has to be extended. I mean, you don't have a choice, but you should, yes, you need to aim to get it filled in thirty days if you have people willing to keep that position.
That's the key. I mean, if we have somebody, we could appoint that person next meeting. So we can.
You wanna do it six o'clock, the third?
I, I want that, yeah.
Okay, then if there's two more. If there's two more, we don't need to appoint anybody at six then. If there's two more that need to be interviewed, we'll have to set that up at that time for later date.
Just do them all at the same time.
Do them all at the same. Do it all three at the same time? Yeah, we'll do it. Okay.
You can also talk to these people between now and then individually. I mean, there's nothing that prohibits you guys from doing that. You just have to interview them as a council in a public meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll get that posted before noon. Plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the first reading. Ordinance twenty twenty five, die six.
It's on the next page.
Oh, next page. Okay, sorry.
And nothing is really changing on this. We just use, we just changed the hourly rates to an annual rate so that they can be paid salary. So here are, this is where the changes are on there.
Okay, we have to read the end document, right?
You can just read the amendments there, the amended parts. You can summarize, I mean, just like Ally did, that everything else is the same, but then read specifically the amended parts. And those two positions, those are gonna be salaried non-exempt, which means they're still eligible for overtime. And so, Matt, it was already calculated.
The background on that is, for one thing, the superintendent's position, we changed that on Gary this year. I don't know what happened that we didn't get that written up before. It doesn't really matter, but Gary was sour. And the reason we did that was because it went back to where COVID was began. And Gary got COVID once across and he was at home, but he was being called. He was working. And technically, as an hourly employee, he couldn't get paid for that. And our thought was the superintendent is really on call twenty four seven. So Earl's position, this is nothing new for that. It, it should have already been that way.
Right.
And Sandy, with all the cancer stuff she's been going through, we discovered this the same deal. We had her working from her hospital bed. We had her working from her bed at home. And we had that discussion a few meetings ago about there should be a way for her to get paid. She almost lost her helping shots. And I woke up at two o'clock in the morning one morning and I was ready to beat myself up and beat Earl up and beat Corinne up because none of us thought to do this. Remember, we were trying to get insurance and we didn't really know how to get that going and it was too late for that anyway, for this one. All we really would have had to do was change her to a salary position. And she could have been paid for all the work she did from home. We worked around that a little bit. But we think that position is just like the superintendent's. If she is out, people are calling her because I, I think Danielle learned a lot during that time. But Sandy just knows a lot of things that people don't know and she should be paid. She's on call just like, oh, if we need her, we call her. That's the reason, that's the reason for changing this.
A lot of salaried positions are exempt though, which means they don't get overtime, but these two will be salaried non-exempt. And so you're still gonna keep track of the actual hours worked. And so if they work over forty hours, you'll take their salary divided by their hours to figure out what their overtime rate then should be to be paid.
Get paid just like they were getting paid, but at their home seat, they get paid for that too. And I didn't know, that may have been part of our confusion. I couldn't remember what, which was which. But I worked under that plan practically my whole career, so I know one of them that works that way, so, so that's the deal.
Okay, having said that, the marked, the marks in here that are changes to the ordinance twenty twenty five, die six are the utility superintendent from sixty two, four hundred to hundred and four thousand annually. And the billing clerk from forty one, six to seventy four, eight eighty annually. And then this ordinance shall be effective on October the twentieth, twenty twenty five and shall be effective through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. So that covers us from right now to the end of the year.
I think we have to do this every year, was that the?
It'll just be part of your salary.
Yeah, well, we have to do the salary ordinance every year, so this is effective for the remainers this year and we'll copy it over to next year's.
Best I can tell, next meeting, Earl's buying ice cream.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
We'll have to read that twice.
Hmm?
We'll have to read that twice and adopt it next meeting.
So we don't, we can't do that tonight?
No, you can just read it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Ally and I are also going to look through the handbook because there are some changes that need to be made in the list in the handbook of who's exempt and non-exempt. We just need to update that list. So Ally and I are gonna be working on that. We'll bring an amendment to you here soon.
And we, we don't have any snow removal bids tonight, do we? By any chance, I thought we had that all.
Well, no, it hasn't been posted yet.
Yeah, we haven't posted anything yet. So the, there's a packet in there that shows last year's and I've just gone through and updated the paperwork to reflect the twenty five to twenty six season. And if, if all looks well, we can get that posted and start to accept bids on it. Or if you'd like changes made, we can get that done.
Yeah.
Well, I assume we're gonna go with Venus again next year.
Well, they still have to post it, don't they?
Yes.
Still have to post it. I don't know if two weeks is long enough.
I think so. I mean, it's up to you guys, whatever you think is.
Well, she got to send a notice to the newspaper?
Um, yes, I think so. I think that that's what you've done in the past. So, yeah, you might need to extend that to thirty days then because of the newspaper publication schedule.
Okay.
Let's just, yeah, let's do it.
Then do it to the second meeting.
Second meeting. Have the, have the cutoff date.
Be the seventeenth, seventeenth of November.
Maybe have the cutoff as the fifteenth.
Okay.
And then we'll open them on the seventeenth.
Did we get, did we get bids last year and we got one for Venus?
I don't remember who we got bids from last year other than Venus. I don't know if we did. Maybe last year.
Last year, you only received one, one bid, which was Venus.
I'll give him a call tomorrow. Let him know that I need to put a bid out.
Who's stepping? Maybe contact you.
Okay.
And I can, you can email him.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have anything on the council? Anything else happen? That would. Okay, next council meeting is November the third, seven o'clock. On Monday.
I need to approve the points before you adjourn.
Okay.
Page one, check it. They're all on page two to sign them. I don't think we're gonna set the address of the town hall.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to publish on this again as long as date, time, and place of the adjourned.
Okay.
Public hearing, it's public P and S.
Okay, I was gonna ask you about that one.
But they announced it within the meeting as well, so it's daytime and address. Daytime and, and location, yes.
Okay.
Which, like, everything that's included on the notice.
Okay.
We're gonna come in, just keep going down this road. You got it easement down here. This isn't real. This is not a good picture. This is all clear. And then come in to here. Right through here. It's only a hundred and twenty six feet.
How far is it from here from the top?
It's about a hundred feet. This circle is a hundred feet in diameter. And we gotta be a hundred feet, you have to own all that property. So we had to move it to the, to the east of the. That's what.
What we do on that?
You own, yeah, everything in red.
Okay.
Which way you coming up from? We're gonna come in from the field here where you got that easement, where the existing wells are. And we gotta clear a hundred and twenty five feet in.
We're in Bucktooth. They'll be up in here someplace, right?
Hmm, probably. Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
You think that's funny? Far to stay out of any residue from something else a little too much?
We do it for tonight's meeting and email you to double check. I need a little list here too, so.
So we're way away from this.
Well, I know it isn't, but I just can't help believe that the possibility exists. We could be in trouble if we get too damn close to the existing well.
Sometimes you can be, but I think we're far enough away. We should be fine.
Okay. Just remember, I know where you live.
Okay, you know where I live.
That's not a statement. Not a threat. It's just a statement.
Oh, I'm not going anywhere. All have good evenings.
You too, yeah.
Thanks, Dan.
See ya.
Thank you.
Is that all on?
Yes, that's all. I'm sorry, I pulled Sarah from them, so you're probably in a new signing spot, but.
You see it about seven forty five? Make a motion to close the meeting at seven forty five? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nope. No opposes. We're all wolfing there tonight. It's kind of a bad deal.